Good afternoon and welcome to the March 2nd, 2021 Policy Session of the Phoenix City Council. I will now call the meeting to order. Can we please call the roll?
Councilwoman DeCiccio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilman Noakowski.
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastore. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Thank you all for joining us today. We will begin with council information and follow-up requests.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. Mayor, just a bit of good news to share. The state has lowered the age for the vaccine to 55. I do hope that the state will revisit the definition of essential workers. And I want to thank you for the letter that you sent to the state on that. I believe a lot of our staff would qualify. Cindy Stotler, I see my... Sorry about that. I look like I was freezing there for a minute. Cindy Stotler, as you know, is retiring. And I want to wish her the best. She is one of my favorite employees. She is a great employee. She's like a sponge. She embraces subject matter and then becomes the master of that subject matter. Her background is actually in budgeting. And she started in the police department. Then she moved to development services and ended up being the Assistant Director of Planning and Development. And ultimately, she ended up in housing where she has done a terrific job. I, for one, am really going to miss Cindy. I really value her as a friend. And the city of Phoenix unfortunately is losing one of their best employees. But I wish her the best. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well said. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to do some different updates, but I do think that we need to take a minute to address some very avoidable and concerning tragedies that we have learned about this week. As the media has reported, Phoenix 911 operator Pamela Cooper, a 20-year veteran employee of our city, is in the hospital on life support. I have been saying for the past few months that our 911 operators are desperately understaffed. Pamela's shift should have been 10 hours, but because of the chronic understaffing, she was forced to stay for 15 hours. This is even despite the fact that she had returned from a six-week leave to recover from COVID. As she told her mom through text, "They are telling me I have to stay till 1:00 now. I'm sitting here crying. If I get worse, I'm making them call an ambulance." The next morning Pamela collapsed and is in critical condition. As the city, and especially as city officials, I hope that we can all keep Pamela in our thoughts today. But I also hope that we can come together to make serious, urgent change. We need to hire more 911 operators. And we need to raise their pay to make the jobs more competitive in the market and to value the employees we already have. We need a comprehensive cleaning plan for the 911 operators' work area to ensure they are adequately protected from COVID-19. We need to ensure that all of our city employees are given adequate sick and personal time so they cannot be forced to return to work while they are still sick. Finally, we need an independent investigation into our 911 call centers and accountability for the mistakes made by the city and those who have made them. Specifically, I want to know why the 911 operators did not receive their Plexiglas desk shields until January, why they were being told to ration their Clorox wipes, and why there are pictures of leaking ceilings, broken chairs, and moldy walls that my office has seen from 911 operators building. I am heartbroken by what has happened to Pamela Cooper. I will keep her and her family in my thoughts and prayers. But I also demand from city management and ask my fellow council members to join me for us to ask for actions and try to remedy some of these issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Pastore.
I just want to give a shout out to Cindy Stotler, who is a losing another Latino within our employment ranks or Latina. And I want to give her another shout out for her being a mining town girl from Arizona. So, thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you all. February... Vice Mayor, do you have some comments?
I wanted to thank Cindy Stotler, too. She's been a valued employee, so knowledgeable, and has really made a difference in this community. So, I just wanted to thank her for all her dedication, hard work, and bless her for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilman Noakowski.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody that responded to the fire on the Seventh Street Bridge, from our parks director to our first responders, to the streets department, to our mayor, to our city manager, and all those individuals that went out there and made sure that our community was informed and taken care of. So, thank you all. And also, I'd like to continue to inform people that we're still doing free COVID testing. Visit phoenix.gov for the locations and times. It's so important that you get tested. It's so important that we continue to wear those masks and practice social distancing. And also to Cindy, you're going to be missed. I know that there's a lot of Latinas at City Hall and at our different facilities throughout the city that look to you as a mentor. And you've taken time to mentor these young ladies to be the leaders that they are. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for everything you've done for the city of Phoenix, especially in the housing department. God bless you and wish you luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to join the chorus and thank Cindy for all the work she's done, particularly with the choice neighborhoods and all the housing that she's brought to the district, working with you and then working with us in District 8. Thank you so much, Cindy. And I told you this privately last time we toured one of the housing. And I'm asking you publicly to please leave us a to-do list because I think your vision and helping us with the Affordable Housing Plan and the work you've done has been amazing. So, looking forward to receiving that to-do list to make sure that your vision continues and the work that happens in the city. And following up with Councilwoman Noakowski, also want to really thankful for the first responders. Really happy no one got hurt on the Seventh Street Bridge. Thank you, Mayor. We were out there on Sunday. And it's scary time. Want to let residents know that the bridge will be closed for some time. So, please use Seventh Ave., 16th Street, as we do still have construction on Central. And we will work as hard as we can to make sure that Seventh Street Bridge comes back. And we can all... It's my main... It's the way I drive to work every day. So, hopefully, we could get it done and rebuild as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On February 25th, the city of Phoenix turned 140. We've accomplished a remarkable amount in our first 140 years. And we still have a lot of work to do. But thank you to everyone who's helped make this city a great place and who's working to make it even stronger. I had the privilege of spending that day with Cindy Stotler and others at one of our senior housing facilities, watching seniors get vaccinated, which was wonderful and I think a good model of how vaccination events could happen. Our seniors were able to register by phone or, in a few cases, in person. Several of them did share with me they appreciated not having to use computers. And they were able to get vaccination appointments where they live so they didn't have to deal with driving if that wasn't something they were doing and had a good experience. So, thank you to all who were involved with that particular event, as well as all my colleagues and partners who are advocating to make sure that more of our residents get vaccinated and that more of our city employees are marked in that essential category where they certainly belong. By keeping our public servants safe, we are keeping our community safe. Speaking of our public servants, I'll join my colleagues in recognizing the important work that our city team is doing, first to respond to the fire on the Seventh Street Bridge and then to rebuild as a result of it. It is an incredibly important arterial for our community and one that I also count as part of my commute. And we do want to get it up and running as soon as safely possible. This month is Women's History Month. And I want to recognize all the amazing women who are making history at this community. During Women's History Month, we are holding city elections. That will be next March 9th is Election Day. And all four of our candidates are dynamic... are women. So, we will be making some more Women's History this Women's History Month. I want to join my colleagues in recognizing Cindy Stotler. In my first year as a councilwoman, she and I held many town halls with our residents where they talked about what they would like to see from the city of Phoenix. And she has done an amazing job implementing those plans. Getting a huge Choice Neighborhood Grant is no easy task. It involves a lot of resident-driven input, as well as working with employers and partners, and putting together a competitive application, which she did. She's been building great communities, including our newest that take into account what our residents would like to see and reflect our history. I'm also profoundly grateful to the work her team... she and her team did on our Affordable Housing Plan, which is addressing such an important community need for Phoenix. So, thank you, Cindy. You leave behind a great legacy for our residents. Today is Read Across America Day. I got to spend the morning reading with second graders, as well as discussing important topics like what a mayor does and what's for lunch. And I want to thank everyone who's promoting literacy from our City of Phoenix libraries to our Youth and Education Office. Would encourage everyone to pick up a book and read today. With that, I will turn to our city manager for his updates.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. First, I want to join in expressing our thoughts and prayers are with 911 dispatcher Pamela Cooper and her colleagues as well. And to Councilmember Guardado, we will provide you a report. I have asked the Human Resources Director to do a full review of the facts of the situation. Also, in response to one of your questions, actually, we have planned, beginning next Monday, March 8th, that dispatcher entry-level pay will be raised to a higher step so that we can raise that entry-level wage for dispatchers. And then we are in the process of finishing a study of the dispatcher classification that should end up with City Council in April or early May for the council's approval to assess and adjust the overall salary structure of the 911 dispatchers. I want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing the service of Cindy Stotler, our housing director who is retiring effective March 12th. You all said it very well about her. I would just add that, you know, certainly Cindy can say with certainty that Phoenix is a better place because of her service as we look at the Choice Neighborhoods Grant and the Edison Eastlake, which was a result of the policy direction of the mayor and the council and the work of her entire department and others in the city to support that. But Cindy is certainly a key factor in that happening. And so, we wish her all the best. And I'm grateful that you all recognize that in her. Thank you. Finally, as it relates to the budget, in two weeks, on March 16th, the city manager's trial budget will be brought forward for initial consideration by the council and the community. That then will lead to the April session, from April 2nd through April 21st, virtual budget hearings. And of course, now and through that time, the Fund to Phoenix tool is available on phoenix.gov. So, we're in the beginning of the budget season. With that, Mayor, thank you, and I'll turn it back to you.
Wonderful. Thank you for those updates. Today's council meeting will focus on an issue of importance to our city, comprehensive roadway safety. I want to thank the many individuals, including our council committees who have been working on this, as well as our staff. We will... Today's presentation will begin with our deputy city manager. But I am excited to welcome the Vice Mayor of Gilbert, who is with us today in her capacity as a traffic engineering expert. What a great expertise to have on understanding of both cities, as well as this important issue. So, welcome. And I'll turn it to our deputy city manager, Mario Paniagua.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And good afternoon to you and to the members of the city council. Just a few days ago, there were three pedestrian fatalities that occurred within a two-hour period. And unfortunately, that's not as uncommon as we might like to think in Phoenix. Just a few weeks prior to that, we had a similar occurrence of three pedestrian fatalities within a six-hour period. Several others have continued to occur at a rate of about every other day, on average. And it's not just the pedestrians that are impacted. The number of fatalities from vehicle collisions continues to remain very high, which we will get into further in the presentation. Safety on Phoenix streets remains one of our biggest challenges. With 5,000 miles of streets spread over 520 square miles and the nation's fastest-growing population, we really appreciate the opportunity today to propose ways to improve safety on our streets in the near and in the long term. With me today is Keeney Knutson, our Street Transportation Director. And as you mentioned, Mayor, we also have a special guest presenting with us, Young Kaprowski. And I'll explain a little bit more about her background. Young is a principal and founder of Y2K Engineering. And she also serves for the council for the town of Gilbert, as you mentioned. And as an engineer and road safety professional, she's spent the last 14 years focused on transportation safety, traffic operations, and bicycle and pedestrian facility design. She's actively managed and completed several multimodal and safety studies, plans, and designs for jurisdictions throughout Arizona. Young has a deep understanding of transportation safety planning for data-driven solutions and safer roads. And she's going to be part of our presentation today. So, from here, I'll turn it over to Keeney to start our presentation today.
Thank you, Mario. And good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today to talk about such an important topic, comprehensive roadway safety. I know from talking to each of you that this is an important issue for you and for Phoenix and is one that reaches across all areas of our city and is of concern to our residents, businesses, and visitors. As the fastest-growing city, we know that more growth means more people on our city streets, driving vehicles, riding bicycles, walking, rolling, and in the downtown area, scootering. The question we are left with is, how do we accommodate this growth while improving the safety of our streets for all roadway users? So, for today, I'm going to be giving you an outline of what we're going to go over in our presentation. First, we'll be focusing on sharing some data related to roadway safety, both at the national and local level. Next, we will share information about how are you currently utilizing the four Es of Traffic Safety: Evaluation, Engineering, Enforcement, and Education to improve the safety of our streets. Finally, this presentation is for possible action. The action item before you is one that is recommended by our Transportation Infrastructure and Innovation Subcommittee at its February meeting. That action is related to the implementation of near-term safety improvements on our roadways and the development of a roadway safety action plan. I will first dive into some data and statistics related to comprehensive roadway safety. When we look at safety analysis, data is a critical component. On this slide is a map of the city of Phoenix. It includes the council district boundaries. Please note that the council districts are filled in with shades of gray, which is solely for the distinction between the boundaries of each council district. This map is a roadway safety heat map, which maps the locations of serious injuries and fatalities on our streets, whether they are pedestrians, bicyclists, or drivers. On the map, the dark brown color shows high-frequency areas for roadway injuries and fatalities, while the lighter cream color shows areas of lower frequency. Although the areas of higher frequency are more concentrated in certain areas of the city, this heat map clearly shows that we have roadway safety issues across our entire city and in all the council districts. Next, our statistics from the National Highway Safety Administration data for total average fatalities from 2017 to 2019. I would note that official traffic collision data typically lags 12 to 18 months as it is first collected and tabulated at the state level before being published out to cities and other agencies. Over those three years, you can see that Phoenix has had the third-highest number of roadway fatalities nationwide, behind only Los Angeles and Houston. Looking at the same data, but normalizing it for a per capita population analysis, in this case, total fatalities per 100,000 persons. Over those three years, you can see that Phoenix has had the sixth-highest number of roadway fatalities nationwide, behind cities such as Memphis, Detroit, Albuquerque, Jacksonville, and Dallas. But also, we are ahead of Los Angeles and Houston, who ranked ahead of Phoenix in total fatalities, as shown on the previous slide. So, it's... When you look at the numbers, it's easy to get lost in those numbers. But when you look at that data, you naturally kind of ask, what is causing those collisions and fatalities? This slide provides a bit of an answer for many of those numbers. This information is tabulated based on contributing factors noted by the police department in Phoenix collisions over a five-year period from 2015 to 2019. The highest percentage of violations in these collisions were failure to yield to traffic and speeding. These violations are noted as the top driver behaviors that result in collisions. And these factors are involved in more than half of Phoenix collisions. When you talk about statistics, again, it is easy to get lost in the numbers and lose perspective. However, I think it is important to really think about the very real impact of these numbers. When you have a collision, it typically starts with someone choosing to make a bad decision or possibly just a simple mistake. That person may be traveling with friends or family. Often, the result of that mistake is hitting another vehicle or pedestrian. That may involve more than one person in that collision. Then, if the collision results in injuries or fatalities, you have family members or friends who are caring for that person as they heal or grieving or lost a loved one. You also have first responders and bystanders who may respond to that collision. And it's even if those who weren't directly impacted by this are impacted by this collision and as it can affect fans and families who are caring for those people as they heal or potentially grieving loved ones. The purpose of this slide is to highlight that one bad decision or mistake doesn't usually impact just one person. It impacts... Its impacts are compounded on others. That is the very real impact of the statistics that we are talking about. As transportation professionals, we make use of the four Es of Traffic Safety to make our roadway safer, to design or modify our streets to make it easier and more realistic to make good decisions as a roadway user. That goal is to provide and encourage the right behavior to guide better decision-making. But it is not foolproof. We know that people will still make bad decisions, risky decisions, that can have life-altering and life-ending consequences. Next, we will dive into the first of the four Es of Traffic Safety: Evaluation. The MAG... AmeriCup Association of Governments publishes an annual report of the top 100 highest-risk intersections within the MAG region, utilizing crash data from the previous five years. The map on the screen is of the Phoenix metropolitan area with Phoenix shown in green. On the map, the red dots show the intersections in the top 20, while the orange dots show the intersections in the top 40, yellow, the top 60, the smaller orange in top 80, and finally, green is in the top 100. The current MAG intersection list identifies 73 intersections in Phoenix in the top 100 and eight Phoenix intersections in the top 10. The next slide combines our roadway safety heat map I discussed earlier with the MAG top 100 intersections that are in Phoenix. Those intersections shown in green dots are on the map, those 73 locations. Now, we use our own data to be able to... And MAG's evaluation to further analyze intersections and roadway corridors with the highest crash patterns and frequencies. We do this through an evaluation tool called a roadway safety assessment, or RSAs. Over the past five years, street transportation has conducted RSAs at 415 intersections and six roadway segments. Those intersections are shown with green dots on the map, while the roadway corridors are shown with green line segments. You may be asking what a roadway safety assessment is. Rather than have me walk through an explanation, I think it would be best to have Ms. Kaprowski walk you through this as she does this for a living. And Young will also discuss the results of a recent RSA on a critically important Phoenix intersection. Young?
Thank you, Keeney. MAG provides annual funding and contracts with transportation safety professionals to evaluate the highest-risk intersections in the region. I've been involved with conducting RSAs since the program began in 2011. RSAs are formal examinations of intersections and corridors from a safety perspective. And they're performed by independent, multidisciplinary teams that review the crash and traffic volume data. And they drive and walk the site for peak hours of the day and at night. Safety treatments and strategies are recommended based on their proven effectiveness and benefits. The recommendations from the RSA team are then presented to the city and are categorized by short, mid, and long-term improvements. Short-term improvements, as you see on the screen, might typically include trimming of vegetation. And this can fall within an existing funded program and can be addressed quickly through a work order. Other short-term recommendations could include signing and striping changes. Midterm improvements also typically fall within an existing funded program, but cannot be implemented as quickly. And examples of this include pavement resurfacing and reconstruction to achieve ADA compliance. This photo shows how site distance is blocked for drivers making left turns when there's a negative offset. And intersection improvements would be needed to correct this issue. And that would be considered a long-term improvement because it carries substantial costs and must be addressed with a capital improvement project. Full signal rebuilds are also considered long-term recommendations. So, we wanted to take a look at one of the road safety assessment intersections that has been evaluated in 2015 as part of an RSA. And this is the intersection of 75th Avenue and Indian School Road, which is part of a corridor evaluation. This specific intersection is MAG's number-one location on its recent list of top 100. In this image, we can see on the left that the current signal head that controls the left-turn movement does not have flashing yellow arrows. And flashing yellow arrows have been proven to reduce left-turn crashes and are easier to understand by drivers. In the middle, we can see that there's only one overhead signal face. And this does not meet current standards where... Which would now require one signal head over each lane of traffic as part of signal reconstruction. The circle on the right highlights that the existing signal does not have pedestrian push buttons, which is a standard with all new and rebuilt signals. All of these recommended improvements would require a full rebuild of this particular signal. Now, let's take a look at an aerial view of the same intersection. The road safety assessment recommended new streetlights be installed as part of the project at this location. And then, in the upper left, we can see the circle highlighting some extra roadway width and an existing bus bay that overlaps two driveways, which could be corrected as part of the project. And then, as we look in the northwest corner in the center circle, it highlights an existing SRP irrigation structure that can increase costs significantly. Many intersections that recommend a... That have a full signal rebuild recommended have not yet been completed because of costly utility conflicts and extensive improvements that are just beyond the signal. The estimated cost for the road safety assessment recommended improvements at the 75th Avenue and Indian School intersection is approximately $1 million and is currently unfunded.
Thank you, Young. Now, we will transition to the second E, Engineering. Engineering is another important element of roadway safety as we just highlighted several of the recommended safety improvements that were identified as part of the RSA or evaluation process. I would note that there are many tools in the traffic safety engineering toolbox, but not all of them may be the right tools for Phoenix. Some of those with demonstrated crash reduction outcomes include Hawk pedestrian signals for our most vulnerable roadway users. We currently have 67 of these in operation. Another is signing and striping changes such as narrowed travel lanes, buffered and protected bike lanes, which help to slow traffic and to provide greater distance and protection between vehicles and bicyclists and pedestrians. Street lighting improvements have also been proven to have safety benefits by addressing nighttime visibility issues on our roadways. The next E is education. With regards to education, our... One of our recent efforts began in 2018 with our Heads Up! Drive Smart!, Block Smart!, Bike Smart! campaign to encourage roadway users to be alert and attentive at all times. Many of our education efforts are also focused on our youth through the school safety education programs. This includes the development of a Pedestrian Safety Activity Book in both English and Spanish to teach children the importance of pedestrian safety. We also use public service announcements to educate roadway users. Our most recent was "Scan the Streets Free Wheels and Feet" to increase awareness and alertness to roadway users who may be using wheelchairs or other mobility devices. The fourth and final E is enforcement. While enforcement is not a function of the street transportation department, we do work very closely with our partners in the police department. I would note in 2020, the police department's Traffic Bureau underwent a significant change by expanding traffic unit within two patrol... by expanding traffic unit within two patrol precincts. A traffic unit squad, which includes one sergeant and nine officers, was assigned to the Mountain View Precinct in April 2020 and the Maryville Estrella Mountain Precinct in September 2020. Police primarily made these changes to improve enforcement and education in these precincts. As evidenced, these 10-member motor units account for 40% of the traffic citations in those precincts, which is telling given the remaining 60% of the violations are issued by the remaining 250 to 300 officers in those precincts. I would note that Commander Issit from the Traffic Bureau is here today in case there are any questions related to enforcement. So you might ask, what efforts do we have underway to address some of our roadway safety issues? I'll first talk about some of our current programs. We have several of them that address, primarily address traffic operational concerns, but may also include traffic safety elements. These include our, these include our pedestrian safety program, which identified pedestrian safety improvements like HAWK signals, median islands, and upgraded crosswalks. Our left turn arrow program adds left turn arrows to existing traffic signals to address intersections with a high number of left-turning movements. Our signal installation program analyzes intersections to determine if a traffic signal is warranted at those locations for installation. Finally, and more focused on neighborhood traffic, is our traffic mitigation program, which brings additional signing and striping and also speed humps and speed cushions to address traffic issues in neighborhoods. It should be noted that these four programs combined represent an annual investment of $4.7 million. I think it is important to highlight today some of the good news that we've been successful in leveraging local monies with federal or regional funding. Last year, Phoenix received $17.5 million from the federal build grant program, which will be combined with $7.5 million in local funding. Our 35th Avenue Safety Corridor Project covers three and a half miles between I-10 and Camelback Road and will provide much-needed safety improvements to one of our most significant roadway safety hotspots. To next cover how we might progress forward in a more strategic and comprehensive manner, given the challenges before us, I'm going to turn it back over to Young.
The city of Phoenix has leveraged regional planning efforts and obtained grant funding to address the issue of road safety, but there's a significant need to implement the process of systemic safety planning. To implement a successful systemic safety planning strategy, the city will start with safety evaluation of good, reliable data to understand the causes and circumstances of motor vehicle crashes. Then solutions can be developed to address the unique circumstances at high-risk locations. Applying a cost-benefit analysis to this to compare the benefits of proposed improvements with the cost of implementing them would allow the city to implement the projects that achieve the maximum benefit for the funding available. The highest-value projects would then be constructed and their effectiveness evaluated after a period of time, thus bringing us back to this recurring safety evaluation with the intent to see trends stabilizing or reducing and a culture of safety and greater awareness emerge. We've talked a lot about current efforts towards road safety, and I just touched upon the need for the city to begin implementing a successful systemic safety strategy. Ultimately, the goal is to get people home safely for the overall quality of life for our residents. Now Kenny's going to discuss next steps and the proposed action items.
Thanks, Young. We have demonstrated that roadway safety is a major concern for Phoenix, but we need to start somewhere to begin to make a bigger impact. Returning to the roadway safety, roadway, sorry, returning to the roadway safety heat map and with the locations where we have conducted recent RSAs, we would recommend allocating additional funding to implement near-term improvements at three of these locations. We estimate an average cost of $750,000 to $1.5 million per intersection to implement the recommended safety improvements. The first location is 75th Avenue and Indian School Road, the one we just highlighted earlier in the presentation. It has a completed RSA and is included in the MAG top 100 list. The second location is 16th Street and Camelback. It has a completed RSA and is also included in the MAG top 100 list. The third location is 19th Avenue and Southern Avenue. It has a completed RSA and is also included in the MAG top 100 list. I would note in the, in the report for today's item incorrectly identified this location as 19th Avenue and Roser. I wouldn't want to clarify that this should have been listed as Southern Avenue and not Roser Road. In addition, we would also recommend reserving additional funds to implement safety improvements at other MAG top 100 intersections. On this slide, the black circles represent three intersection locations I just mentioned. The yellow circle represents a MAG top 100 intersection at 35th Avenue and Camelback Road, which will be addressed with the 35th Avenue Corridor Build Grant I covered earlier. Finally, the red circles highlight 13 additional intersections that are in the MAG top 100 list and also have completed RSAs that were done by the city of Phoenix. We would propose reserving $1.1 million in unprogrammed funds to make improvements at some of these 13 intersections. So that covers the near-term actions we propose to take, to address roadway safety. Now going back to the systemic safety planning discussion that Young shared a few minutes ago, the idea behind that process is that we have many safety issues across our city, and even if we wanted to address them all, we don't have the resources, including staffing or funding, to realistically do that. So embracing a concept like systemic safety planning is vitally important, and it means that we'll use a comprehensive process to identify and select projects that deliver the best safety benefits related to the cost of those improvements. To do something like this across our 520-square-mile city, I believe is both critical and necessary, but it will take time. Staff proposes to initiate and lead the development of a roadway safety action plan. This would help us develop and select the right tools for the right street or intersection and to help prioritize what types of improvements and where those improvements are made. More importantly, this would be a Phoenix roadway safety action plan that would be appropriate for the unique and diverse needs of our city. An effort like this will only be successful with the involvement and engagement of the community. We would propose to work with the mayor and each of the council offices to identify neighborhood groups, businesses, and stakeholders to get the input and feedback we need. That key part of the, the key part of that engagement is identifying and establishing the safety priorities of our communities. Although we would rely on community input in the development of the roadway safety action plan, it is still critical to ensure that the content and recommendations that emerge from that plan are grounded in sound traffic safety principles, essentially the four E's. After we work through the development of the roadway safety action plan, we would bring back a plan with implementation recommendations for council input, consideration, and action, and hopefully approval. The plan recommendations would likely include Phoenix priorities for addressing roadway safety issues and would also include funding options for implementation of the plan. As this would be a community and stakeholder-driven process, we anticipate being able to return to council about this time next year with a completed plan. Our staff action items are summarized next two slides, and then our requested action from council. First, we recommend the implementation of near-term improvements totaling $5.5 million. Those would be across the three intersections I noted earlier, as well as the additional MAG top 100 intersections. Then the next portion of that action is on more in a long-term basis, or a longer-term basis, I should say, is the development of a roadway safety action plan, and we estimate approximately $500,000 for the cost of that plan. And then we would return to council with completed roadway safety action plan and recommendations for implementation. So in summary, the staff requests council approval of $3 million in Streets T20-50 funds, $3 million in general funds over five years, and five full-time city staff positions using Arizona Highway User Revenue Funds. I'll note that that cost of those five staff positions is estimated about a half a million dollars per year, and we can accommodate within our HERF revenue budget. And those would help implement both the near-term solutions and the roadway safety action plan as well. With that, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions from mayor or council.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Stark has been such a leader on these issues. Thank you to Councilwoman Williams and her subcommittee as well for moving this forward, but we'll turn to Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and I do want to thank the Vice Mayor and the Transportation Infrastructure and Innovation Subcommittee. We had a really robust discussion on this issue, and I think it was a very good discussion. You know, one of the biggest complaints that I get in District 3 is speeding and road safety, and I certainly don't like being number three or number six with regards to traffic accidents, including pedestrian and vehicular fatalities. So I think this is an important step moving forward. I really thank Kenny for everything he has done on this. He really thinks out the box, and I appreciate that. That's not typical for engineers, black and white. It's also nice to see the Councilwoman from Gilbert here, especially a woman in engineering. That's pretty fabulous, so kudos to her and her background. I can't thank everyone enough for looking at this issue with me because it is that important to me, and it may be my background in planning, and I work a lot with engineers, and so I think it's vital that we move forward. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion if you want, or I can wait?
I think it would be wonderful if you'd make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to read from a script because it's a pretty detailed motion. "I move to approve staff's recommendation to allocate $3 million in T20-50 street funds and $3 million in general funds over five years, and to add five full-time street positions funded by state highway user revenues, all of which to implement recommended safety improvements at 75th Avenue and Indian School Road, 16th Street and Camelback Road, 19th Avenue and Southern Avenue, and additional projects in MAG's top 100 intersection lists, as well as to develop a comprehensive roadway safety action plan to be brought back to city council." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. A great motion.
Second.
A motion and a second?
It does.
It feels good. It's a motion that will help us save lives. We are losing too many to roadway safety incidents. We do have about seven members of the public here to address the council, so I am going to go ahead and take those comments. We will begin with Katrina Heine King, followed by Margaret Herrera.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. First, before I address the topic, if I could take just a quick moment, I really wanted to thank you, Mayor, council, city manager Mario, and Jesus Sapien, and all the public transit staff for their work with TransDev over the past year particularly. We've all worked really hard together to keep the riding public and our employees safe as possible during this pandemic. You know, and it's times like what we're going through right now that remind me why we've been successful here as your service provider for public transit for the last 50 years. And it isn't because, of course, we've done it all alone, but because the city takes, you know, public transit quite seriously as, you know, as an important infrastructure, equally as important as, you know, the investments in the city streets that you're talking about today, which is what I'd like to speak to you in support of this afternoon. Of course, the health of the streets and the awareness and the education of the public who traverse the streets is particularly impactful on TransDev services as we provide the public transit for you in the city of Phoenix. Just to put it in perspective, TransDev alone, which, as you know, operates roughly 75% of the city's bus service, we operate over 28,000 miles on average every single weekday on the city streets. So we know as well as anyone those hotspots for hazardous intersections, you know, and we can absolutely testify as to the efficacy of such things as the high-intensity activated crosswalk or the HAWK signals, as well as other improved signaling that you mentioned. So, you know, I'd also would offer TransDev's cooperation if there's any data that we could help in your strategic planning to determine, you know, what the most need may be for the city as a result of traveling all those miles mentioned. Every single day, we've collected quite a database of information ourselves on where the trouble spots are that we see. So I just wanted to say, we, TransDev fully encourages you to approve the allocation for the streets projects up before you today. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you so much. Margaret will be next, followed by John Hamby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Guygo, Vice Mayor Williams, and members of the city of Phoenix and Seoul. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in support of the development of the Phoenix Roadway Safety Action Plan. As introduced, my name is Margaret Herrera. I am the Transportation Safety Program Manager at Maricopa Association of Governments, or MAG. As you may know, MAG serves as the Metropolitan Planning Agency for the region, with Phoenix being a significant partner in the region. The Transportation Safety Program was established at MAG in 2002 as one of many areas' planning functions serving the region. The Transportation Safety Program focuses on working collaboratively with our member agencies to identify current and potential future transportation-related issues, concerns, and needs in the region, and determine ways to address them through the MAG regional transportation planning process. Specifically, the products of the MAG Annual Crash Risk Analysis and Road Safety Assessments are used here to establish the logical and prudent next step in developing a comprehensive roadway safety action plan. As presented to you by Director Knudsen, the MAG Annual Safety Analysis and Safety Studies that were described here and also provided to you in materials for the agenda today. We enthusiastically encourage our member agencies to use these resources for this very purpose, tailored to the unique needs of the agency. I would like to point out a couple of areas in the proposal for the development of the city of Phoenix Roadway Safety Action Plan that will, that will be key to a quality-based plan for keeping pedestrians, motorists, Transit Operators, and all those who use the roads safe. The safety measures identified through the Quality Database Plan to be implemented on Phoenix's 5,000-mile street network complements the investments to be made in increased transit services, especially as it relates to pedestrians and bicyclists. All transit users are pedestrians and bicyclists for a portion of their trip. Safety and equity will be key to public perception of the quality transit services, as well as the Phoenix network as a whole. MAG recently initiated a regional pedestrian and bicycle safety education program called CME Arizona to be administered in partnership with our member, with member OGE enforcement activities. The education enforcement elements to be developed.
You could give us your final thought. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to say that MAG wholeheartedly supports the development of Phoenix Roadway Safety Action Plan and look forward to continue enhancing our partnership and advancing road safety for all users. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for your time.
Thank you so much. John will be next, followed by Cece.
Hello, Mayor and Phoenix City Council, and thank you for having me today. Thank you, Kenny and team, for the in-depth analysis and planning. It's really impressive. My name is John Hamby. I'm the Executive Director of Phoenix Community Alliance, downtown's 38-year-old leadership and advocacy organization, and the membership affiliate of Downtown Phoenix, Inc. On behalf of PCA and our Multimodal Committee, we'd like to share our support for the allocation of up to $6 million to manage the development of roadway safety action plan, or the R.S.A.P., which we believe will ensure the creation and completion of high-priority roadway safety projects. PCA's Multimodal Committee has stated in our public policy agenda that we would advocate for multimodal transportation within greater downtown Phoenix with a focus on safety, reliability, equity, and inclusion. I won't pretend to know all the stats in depth like Kenny and team, but the stats ranking Phoenix in the top three to six cities in the nation, depending on what you're looking at, for overall traffic fatalities and 179 traffic-related deaths in 2019. With that, we believe that this is not only necessary but imperative. We understand that this support will position the city to address short, mid, and long-term roadway improvements, anything from, you know, what they were talking about, the new street signage, cutting back vegetation, pavement adjustment, ADA enhancements, reconstruction of intersections, full traffic simple builds, and so on. All are very welcome projects that we fully support. So thank you for your time today, and please again note that Phoenix Community Alliance supports this item.
Thank you so much. Cece will be next, followed by Jeff Bowles.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ceci Myers, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for District Operations in the Cartwright School District. In this role, I oversee many departments, including but not limited to safety and risk management, as well as transportation. The city of Phoenix Street Transportation Department delivers a vital function to our local infrastructure and has a responsibility to provide an accessible city with safe mobility options for people walking, riding bicycles, driving vehicles, and using transit. It's very concerning to us that the National Highways Traffic Safety Administration consistently ranks Phoenix in the top three cities in the nation for overall traffic fatalities, and this is exactly why a roadway safety action plan is necessary. As a school district that serves over 15,000 children, the Street Transportation Department's educational programs are primarily oriented towards school safety, specifically pedestrian and bicycle safety for our children. Streets have dedicated staff that coordinate school safety and educational programs, and this work is invaluable to our Cartwright School District. Special thanks to Mr. Don Cross, who's very supportive of our district. The Cartwright School District welcomes additional education efforts, including the increase the increase use of driver feedbacks, systems, and signs. And I was delighted to see Seventy Fifth Avenue and Indian School as a part of this plan. It's greatly needed. I just want to conclude by stating the Cartwright School District wholeheartedly supports the adoption of the Comprehensive Roadway Safety Plan, and we truly appreciate all the planning that went into this proposed systemic improvements. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for important testimony. Jeff will be next, followed by Robert Pizorno.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Jeff Bowles. Here is Creighton Community Foundation. We work on behalf of our schools in and around Creighton and surrounding communities. We have supported low-income inner-city communities in east-central Phoenix for eight years as we seek to uplift youth outcomes through the development of fiber, youth-supportive, safe, healthy neighborhoods and places. I hope today I might help lend a perspective on how roadway safety shows up in our neighborhoods. For the record, I am fully in support of these investments, even while I paint a bleak picture. For eight years, we've seen traffic flow challenges in our corridor as a challenge across almost every aspect of life. Low pedestrian traversability creates transportation challenges for schools, where some schools bust ninety-five percent of their kids, even though they live no more than a half mile away. As we talk with community members, we hear stories of families that are afraid to walk to school because of the amount of traffic and difficulty in safely navigating a path across major thoroughfares. Elsewhere, the unintentional and less than optimal bifurcation of neighborhoods by major thoroughfares has created pockets of neglect and pockets that are optimized to harbor criminal activity and poor behavior, where traffic patterns encourage high-speed transit of what would otherwise be peaceful neighborhoods. Sometimes, as some council members here today know, with gunshots sounding out car windows because of some of these traffic patterns. The resulting activities and traffic patterns unintentionally imposed result in less healthy places. They prevent parks and encourage trash, and air quality suffers. This is the nature of inequity, and transportation patterns are deeply connected to inequity in our most vulnerable communities. I encourage you with this project to let this lens inform your definition of and thinking about roadway safety. Our fine city and its leadership has invested deeply in rich resources crossing many of these neighborhoods, and specifically in the Grand Canalscape improvements, which have created a beautiful point of pride, as well as our beautiful public transportation system. Roadway safety has the opportunity to be a significant investment that builds on the vibrancy of this rich resource set that is connecting communities and making neighborhoods more vibrant and fascinating ways. I thank you for proposing this and for all of the thought that has gone through it, and we are fully supported.
Thank you so much. Robert will be next, followed by Mark Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate this opportunity to to speak to you regarding this very important issue. My name is Robert Pizorno, and I'm the Government Affairs Manager for Crown Castle International. And my area covers the desert southwest. I'm also very fortunate to be a resident of the city of Phoenix. Crown Castle is a telecommunications infrastructure company, and much of the work we do, especially here in Arizona over the past years and in the upcoming years, involves working within the right-of-way. While we have done quite a bit of work in Arizona already, recent events have put substantial pressures on our digital telecommunications network, and those demands placed on our network have caused, not only in Arizona, but throughout the United States, an expansion of telecommunications infrastructure at an exponential rate, and that expansion will only continue. As much as everyone talks about wireless communications, the secret, of course, is that wireless isn't a hundred percent wireless, but rather only the last connection point is wireless. The vast network after the tower is a broad network of fiber optic cable in the right-of-way that holds our network altogether. This expansion is what brings me here today to support Phoenix's efforts to address roadway safety. Safety in the right-of-way is a major focus for our company, for not only our workers, but for those who share the right-of-way with us. In discussing this issue with my colleagues around the United States, we all agree that the plan presented here is a tremendous plan at addressing the challenges faced here in the valley. The city's efforts for keeping pedestrians, motorists, and all those who use the right-of-way safe, and it will help keep those who work in the roadway environment have safer working conditions, and those who work in the road are often forgotten. But roadway safety is as important to them, just like it is to those in cars or cyclists or pedestrians. I look forward to seeing this plan implemented and to continue to work with the city over the coming months and years. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to speak.
Thank you so much. Mark Rodriguez, the floor is yours.
Hello, Mayor Kate Guyago and everybody at the City Council. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Awesome. It's good to hear from you, Mayor, and I like your new hairdo on your virtual computer because I seen you yesterday because you're talking about all those road safety and all that stuff because I always get road safety because I always take the bus because I just don't always see accidents and all that stuff. And when all that traffic and street racing and could be dangerous and all that is because me and my mom were were driving home from the casino, but because she has always see those street racers that always want to street race us, and then my mom always called the police and all that because street racing is illegal and all that because I always try to 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 avoid the street racing because I don't want to get danger on me because I always trying to be love with you and all that. And then all that stuff and the city councils and and that's it for me, Mayor. Have a great day. Love you forever.
Thank you so much, Mark. That concludes our public comment for today's session. Thank you all who shared your thoughts and your time with us. We will begin with councilmember questions and comments. Councilman Waring.
Hey, Keeney, I just had a couple of thoughts. I think you touched on the first one. Impedants to viewing, particularly if you're trying to make a left turn. I just I get a lot of complaints from constituents about bushes or you know, just kind of infrastructure that seems like it would be put someplace else, not right in the line of sight, particularly again if you're trying to make a left turn. You know, I I I just want to make sure that that, you know, that just seems like a simple, cheap, easy thing. I know we've had bushes removed before. I recognize sometimes the landscaping isn't our landscaping, but if there is a way to work with businesses, you know, I've called in some myself. It's just it's just something that seems like an easy fix because it's making a hard operation, turning left across some of our big streets, even harder. And can I ask for clarification about something that you said? The failure to yield. Does that include? I had always heard lane changing was a big issue in accidents, just from police officers. I know, not even necessarily in Phoenix, just in general. Is that failure to yield, or does that fall into a different category?
Mayor Councilman Waring, there that's a separate category. There is a separate note for contributing factor that is unsafe lane change. The failure to yield the traffic is typically anybody, you know, somebody turning in front of somebody or potentially not granting the right-of-way for somebody who has that right-of-way in the street.
I I sort of figured that was probably the case. I just think the the lane changing, you know, people not using the turn signal and so forth. But you've also now got the different factor. I think Deb Stark and I have talked about this. You've just got, it's not everybody, but you've got, you know, the extreme speeder. And I know we're talking about education and stuff, but there's not much you can do. If someone's going seventy in a forty, I've got some news. They already kind of know they probably shouldn't be doing that. They're just doing it anyway. Saw somebody doing that this morning. Very few trips can I take now where I don't see like one or two people doing the really extreme speed, the weaving in and out and so forth. I'm not sure what with the makeup of our screens you can do. We have big streets, wide lanes. But but that's certainly something that if it could be addressed, would be something that you probably want to take a look at. The bus lanes, you and I had talked about this prior to this. Sometimes I'm surprised where where bus stops are located. And I'll just I'll give you an example because I was thinking about this after we spoke about this. If you go to Forty Fourth Street and Indian School on the northwest corner, there is a a shopping center. It's got Rubio's and Subway's and Starbucks, and I think Walgreens is in there. But if you want to come out, and we have a bus stop, there's a bus stop just west of that intersection on Indian School, and the bus has a turn lane or a dedicated lane, which is good for it. But sometimes the buses just stay there, and if you're coming out of that center, not even to make a left turn, but to make a right, because it's before the turn-in for the center. I mean, you you're making a blind turn for sure, and making a right turn can be really dicey. And I just don't understand the layout. I just don't know what to think. It it seems like it would have been predictable that this might be an issue when the whole place was created and set up. It just seemed like moving the buses a little further to the west would have solved that problem. Another one is, and it's been fixed now because I complained about it to your predecessor so much. There was a there was a up where the construction, really, it's right exactly where the new sun's practice facility is. We had a bus lane set up so that the buses would stop and its tail would actually stick out into the the a second lane of traffic. So everybody had to stop, and then people get antsy, and they start trying to jump over in the other lane where traffic was unfettered. So you had people merging from a dead stop with morning traffic where you might have people going fifty in a forty. There's just a dicey situation. They they moved it, frankly, because I said enough about it. I saw so many close calls. And I'm like, again, what what was the thinking that went into putting that there? It just seems like, in some cases, we're creating our own traffic issues where just a little more thought about it would maybe avoid some of that. So those are just a couple of things I I wanted to mention. I'm sure they don't lead to tons of accidents, but at the speeds people are driving now, I could see where any accident could really be disastrous. So I don't know if you have any comment about that, but I just wanted to put in my two cents worth. You know, we're fortunate. We look at the map that District Two has, you know, doesn't have the and I don't think any of the the hundred on that list that you had given us. But, you know, that doesn't mean everything is safe and well either. And so if some of these smaller things can be addressed, or if I let you know about them, I'd appreciate if they could be included in this as well. Thank you.
Mayor Councilman Waring, I think you you hit the head on nail on the head really on on the couple of those points here. Obviously, for the short-term improvements, the things that we can take care of relatively easily, I think as a matter of identifying those that contribute to safety issues at a given location or corridor are things that we will address quickly. Those are definitely the short-term type of type of improvements. But the other one you mentioned about, say, like the Forty Fourth Street and Indian School corner, I think you that is the complexity and 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 the difficulty of the 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 task before us is because our city just didn't develop overnight. It was over decades, and and the values and and the way we developed have changed over that timeframe as well. And so you have driveways for commercial centers that were were put in with certain accessibility in mind for getting people into and out of, and then you have bus stops as 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 ADA has become more of a focus of of the nation of of Phoenix. Those bus stops have moved closer to the intersection to be able to improve the accessibility of those intersections to be able to make transfers with bus routes. And then you then you talk about also, just just as we've improved the bus service as well, there's more bus routes out there. So you have a lot of things that have happened over decades. And it's not, and if we had a chance to be able to do different things differently today with some of those new and developments, we would do it differently. But that's part of the complexity of what we're our challenge here is before us is how to work through those existing conditions to be able to make our roadway safer.
We'll go to Councilmember Garcia, then Councilwoman Guardado, and then Count Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off by by thanking staff. I think we we had a tough conversation. I think it seems a lot longer ago, but I think it was about a year ago about the red light cameras. And I think the crux of that conversation was how do we actually assess all that's all that are the issues at each intersection? And so I really want to applaud this course in which we're going to address the most problematic intersections and then finding different solutions or things that we can do that is not just enforcement. And so I obviously supporting the plan. I think I was I wasn't on council yet when the similar plan was put out in Vision Zero. I was supportive of the majority of that plan. So I'm I'm excited for this. I'm excited to to be able to continue to assess problems. And and for folks like like Jim, I want to also, you know, a bunch of intersections come to mind. I'm not going to read them out loud, but but I think we all understand our districts. We all understand our intersections. And to be able to address each one with different fixes, I think, is an amazing way forward. And so no, no real questions, just kind of wanting to get to work on this and then figure out what other intersections or what other kinds of kind of comprehensive things we can do to make our roads safer. So thank you all for the work.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado and then our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to thank Keeney and staff for all of the great work that you guys have put into this project. I know that we've been talking about this for for a minute. And even though I usually can pride myself for being number one, I think it's it's hard to be number one in the one hundred problematic areas in the in the city of Phoenix. I think so I so thank you for all the work that's going to get done on Seventy Fifth and Indian School. Hopefully, we can put a plan together on that whole little corridor. I know that Seventy Fifth Avenue and Indian School is number one, and then Sixty Seventh and Indian School is number two. So hopefully, we can we can do some work there. Keeney, I know we've talked a lot about that in the past before COVID days. I know we did a couple of meetings with the Estrella Super Moms, and they also talked about the different issues that we've seen in that area. I'm sure they're they're delighted and excited to see all the work that's being done on Seventy Fifth and Indian School. So thank you. Once again, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Any any help that you need from us, let us know. I know there's some other issues that we're dealing with. We have the canal that we're going to be working on that hopefully will help calm down the traffic and a lot of great things that are going to be coming to the West Side, thanks to the leadership of of every of everyone here. I also want to thank Sessi for coming on and speaking from the Cartwright School District. She knows have a split special place for her in my heart with her guidance in in terms of everything that we're doing for students in the Cartwright School District. So yeah, so with that, thanks so much, Mayor. Thank you to everyone, and hopefully we'll be doing great projects together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to get you a number one for safety list. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to express my sincere appreciation for staff for moving on this so quickly and to the T and I Subcommittee members. Deborah Stark has been a champion in this area and well as Laura Pastora and Betty Gerardo. I just think they've done an exceptional job bringing items forward. I do have a couple of questions, though. Speeding is a major problem, and I know I think we need more enforcement on certain streets. But I don't want to forget about neighborhoods because I have speeding in neighborhoods that are close to schools. And is there a way that part of the development of this plan could include more of those little trailers that show the speeding? Because they seem to work in certain areas, and I was hoping we could get a few more of them out into the neighborhoods, help slow traffic down. So I don't know if that's part of the transportation plan they're talking about because it sounds like it's major streets. And I know we've already got motors out there. I just think we need more people going seventy miles an hour. Every night, my daughter comes home from work, and she works on Lower Buckeye. So she brings Thirty Fifth or Forty Third home, and I have to hear about twenty minutes of the speakers. So I would appreciate anything we can do, and I think this plan really is one that will help address throughout the city as well as when we create future plans taking into some of the things that Councilman Waring said. So thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Williams, and members of the council, I think this, as we talked about this roadway safety action plan, if it's moved forward, it will focus on the four Es and and what you're talking about with the speed feedback trailers. And we also have in the school zones, speed feedback signs, permanent feedback signs that go in the school zones. Both those are part of our education component of of what we do. So that is something that that we can definitely have included as we talk about ways that we want to focus as a city on tackling the the traffic safety challenges, including the education component of that.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, I also want to thank our staff for all their hard work. Also, is there any data on the new texting and driving bill that was just passed? Is it working? Is it helping out with the accidents at these crucial intersections? helping out with the accidents at these crucial intersections? And also, one of the biggest things I always see is when you're driving down and a bus stops, sits there on the street, I think we need to look at some more bus bays that the buses can actually pull out of traffic and move back into the traffic. And just want to really thank the staff for everything they're doing. And also, what are we doing right now? I know that we talked about the red cameras a while back, and those areas that were crucial, those intersections. What have we done since then to make sure that we lowered the fatalities in those areas? And that's really it. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I think when it comes to the question you had about texting and driving, I don't have any data in front of me, but that's something we can circle back with our colleagues in the Police Department and ask and see if there's anything thus far. We're about two months in on the actual enforcement element of that new law. I think when bus bays, we work with our Public Transit Department. We know as part of the T2050 program that there is funding available to be able to address locations to install bus bays. Sometimes that's constrained by utilities and other private businesses that might be in there, but where we have high activity of boarding and deboarding of buses, those are prime locations to be able to install those bus bays, to be able to get buses out of the, out of the traffic lanes, to be able to improve traffic safety and operations. The last piece on there, related to red light cameras, I think with those, the deactivation, I think one of the things we want to be able to do is to look at the data, since those have been deactivated, to see what kind of trends are happening at those intersections. As I mentioned in the presentation, some of that traffic data, it lags a bit, so we don't have anything current right now, but that is something on our focus, to be able to see what happened once that enforcement mechanism went away in those locations where we had those red light cameras. But that's something we can definitely include and provide briefings to the council on.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank staff and the council that supported, I want to say, a year ago, maybe it's been longer, a year and a half ago, when we first started down this road of speaking. I think it was one of our first items in policy to vote on a complete street or a complete plan. And here we are today, at least being able to get there. So I want to thank staff for really their patience, and I want to thank staff for looking at it and bringing us a full, comprehensive plan to demonstrate the need for this. So I really appreciate it. As you can see, District Four, District Five, and District, part of District Six is the heart of some of this, the heart of the meeting of the report, but definitely District Four, because obviously it's in the heart of the city. And that's where we move a lot of traffic in and out of all, of the city, coming to downtown, getting out of downtown, being able to go to Central Phoenix, being able to go to the hospitals, the art museums, anywhere around in the heart of the city. So we're moving traffic. And I will take ownership of this, because then I can fix those traffic problems within the heart of the city and take some ownership. And by doing that, I have been newly selected or newly placed on the National League of Cities Transportation Committee, and have been fast and furious working on a lot of the elements and being able to work, or not beginning to work, it's not the beginning, beginning for me, to work with federal government to bring federal dollars. So it's a good point in time that this landed the way it did. So I really appreciate it. I am definitely supportive of this and need to make it through and make sure that there's no longer any more accidents. And if they are, it's, which we know there will be, as this we can pass, but they're not as dangerous as it should be. Our roads aren't as dangerous. I do agree with Councilwoman Williams that we do need to look at our neighborhoods, too, because there is a lot of speeding, getting off our streets and now going into the neighborhoods. And we need to look at some of our neighborhoods where there is a lot of cut-through traffic and come up with ways of solving that issue. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, once again, for being patient and getting it to the finish line, and really appreciate all the work that staff and council has done on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your prestigious appointment. We're excited to have you represent us at the national level. Any additional council member comments?
Mayor, just a quick one.
Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah, it'll be very quick. So, you know, everyone's talking about traffic. Traffic is only going to get worse, and it's going to get more congested as we move forward in the city and actually in the valley. Right now, from my understanding, ADOC came out a few days ago saying that we're at 90% of pre-COVID. That doesn't include all the new individuals moving in here. If you think that we are hitting and having traffic congestion today, in three months, when everything pretty much starts to open up, you're going to see massive traffic congestion. We need, I get the traffic safety part of it, and I agree with it. I'm going to vote for this, because I agree with this. But at the same time, we need to be looking at how to relieve traffic congestion on our streets. Not going to happen by buses. It's not going to happen by trains. They carry less than 1% to 2% of the population. But we've got to figure out a way of how we're going to deal with the massive influx of individuals moving to our community and to our state. We've got to figure out how we're going to deal with this on our freeways. I know it's really not as much of our concern as the state of Arizona, but I don't hear too many people talking about traffic congestion and the amount of pollution and the amount of anxiety and frustration it's going to cause a lot of our drivers. And it's also going to be an impact on the economic side of it. If people see our area in our community as congested, they're not going to want to move here, and they're not going to want to spend their money here, and they're going to be moving to other places. So as we're talking about safety, we should also be combining that with congestion conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmen. Any additional comments? Well, thank you so much to everyone who's contributed this. It's been a major priority for the Transportation Subcommittee, as well as our staff, Public Safety Subcommittee, and so many others. The statistics we have right now are not where we want to be, and this is a real opportunity for us to save lives of Phoenicians. So thank you for taking this seriously and moving forward. It sounds like, well, let's do roll call.
Councilwoman DeCecio.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guadalupe.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilman Waring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Gallego.
Yes.
And Mayor, that item passes unanimously.
Thank you so much to all who have worked so hard on that. With that is our final agenda item. Thank you so much for joining us. We are adjourned.
Thanks, Mayor.